Hello and welcome to the next in our series of Journal Star Editorial Board interviews with at-large Peoria City Council candidates. I'm Chris Kerrigard, Journal Star Associate Editor. With us today is at-large City Councilwoman Beth Jensen.
Hi.
Beth, thank you for being here.
Oh, you're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. And I'm also joined by Journal Star Executive Editor Dennis Anderson.
Good afternoon.
Beth, you've been on the council now for not quite five years, or not quite six years, right? 2013 you were appointed. Why are you running again and what makes you seek another term?
Well, most importantly, because I love this city. I think Peoria is a great place to live. My husband and I actually aren't native Peorians and chose to live here 25 years ago to start a family and raise our family here. So I love the city and I want to make it run better and be a place that kids like my two boys who are 15 and 17 want to come back and live. So that's one of the reasons. Another reason I think I've been an important independent voice on the city council, always speaking up, asking tough questions when they're not being asked, and have tried really hard to make sure that the government runs in an open and transparent manner, that we have more public input before we make decisions, that all voices are considered, all stakeholders who have a stake and interest in certain things that we're doing are heard. And I think those are all very important things that I've advocated for and I'll continue to do so if elected again.
One of those instances where you're talking about getting more public input, one of the questions that we asked in our questionnaires about trying to spur business development in some of the underdeveloped areas of our city, and you talk about wanting more community neighborhood initiatives like the Help Shape West Main Street initiative that brought in people and voices and decided what to do with some of those spaces and what programs to pursue. What specific areas would you target for that in South Peoria or the East Bluff?
Well, actually, I think the area on Wisconsin across from Glen Oak School, although we've had a little bit of development there, I think that's prime for the same type of thing that we did on West Main Street in Sheridan. You already have some interested stakeholders, people that are pretty active in their neighborhood. You've got the East Bluff Community Center and their Neighborhood Association. You have the Boys and Girls Club there, a couple of businesses, the school. And that's kind of how we started out with the West Main Street initiative that we started a couple of years ago. We got neighbors to come, business owners to come, and we had meetings. I participated in those. We brainstormed. We came up with different ideas and tried them out. Some worked, some didn't. Some moved forward. And so I think that's a prime place for that sort of initiative, as well as some different areas on the south side.
What south side areas do you think are prime for that?
You know, I think even though the only thing there is around MacArthur, where you turn to go to Lincoln Library, that kind of, I guess, that little corridor there, I think that would be a good place. You know, that's where SCUC, the South Side Community United for Change, is an organization that meets there monthly at the Lincoln Library. I attend those meetings and a lot of the people that attend those meetings, several of them live right around that area, and they're active already in the neighborhood, in the city. I think that would be a prime location. They currently have on that corner, I think it's Green Lawn, it might be Lincoln. There's a corner there where the last couple of years they've decorated an evergreen tree there and had Christmas carols.
Yeah.
You know, so there's already some activity there. It's not that far from Manuel High School as well. And I think that that's ripe. It's where, you know, unfortunately, we lost the grocery store. And now that we have South Side Mission going in there with the store, you know, there is at least a little bit of activity and business there along with the Dollar Store across the street. So you already have some businesses there along with the meat market that's down there. So I think that would be a good place to start.
Okay. You brought up the grocery store, which is also on my list to talk about because it feels almost just though these last couple of months, that's faded away. And we just passed the one-year anniversary last week of those stores closing down. What is not being done that ought to be by the city in terms of trying to get a grocery store back in the south side? Or have we reached the limits of what City Hall can do there?
I don't think we've reached the limits. One of the things I've been talking about on the campaign trail and that I think we should explore are the new opportunity zones, you know, that just recently, the statutes were passed to allow us to do that. We have a short window to use them. But I think that opportunity zones could be used on the south side or the east bluff or even, you know, the west bluff where there isn't a grocery store to spur maybe some initiative with a grocery store, maybe a smaller type-sized grocery store, but to provide some incentives, some tax relief, those kinds of things. I don't think that's been offered. And I think that is, that might be the way to get a grocery store here. I mean, you're probably aware of all the problems, the low margins. We've got to make sure people shop there and not shop online. And, you know, we need a grocery store, but I'm not quite sure what else to do. I support the new one that opened up, Sue Chef on Southwest Adams. You know, when Save-A-Lot was there, we made an effort, my husband and I, to always stop there when we needed milk and vegetables and, you know, quick things because we don't live too far from there.
Just down the hill.
Yeah, just up the hill, just a few, you know, probably a half mile away. So, you know, I think they're important. And we've been without a grocery store where I live in the west bluff. We haven't had a grocery store since.
Since Sullivan's closed.
Yeah, or Thompson's. Food Basket closed and then it was a Save-A-Lot. And so it's been over 10 years. And we don't, so we don't have a grocery store. We have to drive up north. And it is a problem and I think the city should try to do more to help make it happen.
We'll talk a little bit about the budget.
Sure. One of my favorite topics.
Yeah, it was difficult negotiations, I think, that went on, lost some jobs, some new fees were instituted that people aren't really happy about. Where were you at the end of that in terms of, were you satisfied with where things go? What went right, what went wrong?
Actually, I was, you know, I did not vote in favor of the budget. I was disappointed during the budget discussions. I came out with several alternatives to the property fee and to eliminating the 22 or ultimately the 18 firefighter positions. One of the things I proposed was reducing some of the contributions that we make to outside organizations. I think when we're facing a $7 million budget deficit, we shouldn't be spending, we shouldn't be paying for the municipal band, although that's a great program. I think we should be trying to find a private donor or two to support that. I also proposed reducing the amount of money that we were giving to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Our budget included $571,000 or $572,000 to that organization, along with the additional money that we provide to the Civic Center. You know, just a few years ago, they were connected and it was one lump sum. Now we're paying more to both. And I think when we're $7 million in the hole, that should be reduced. So I proposed reducing that in half. I also proposed putting half as much into our reserve fund. When you're $7 million in the hole and you haven't been funding the reserve fund, I don't think we should have been putting $2 million in this past budget cycle. I agreed and proposed that we keep the same 10-year goal, but gradually increase the amount that we put into the reserve fund to reach that goal as we get back on our feet and not the year that we're facing $7 million deficits. Other things that I also proposed was looking into was reducing salaries of management employees for anyone that made over $100,000. I proposed that we reduce their salaries by $10,000. I know that's not politically popular, but I mean, that's what businesses do. And I think that we should do more of that in the upcoming budget cycle. We've never done this since I've been on the council, but I think we need to go line by line by line through everything in our budget as a council and prioritize them and decide, is this something we should be funding? And if so, how much? And I think all the councils should rank things because, you know, we can't keep doing what we're doing. I mean, the revenues are still not going up with our sales tax declining and our pension obligations. So I was not satisfied with the budget. And I do think that there's other things that we should have done and that we can do in the future.
I want to ask you about the $10,000 reductions for those making more than $100,000 a year. I did a quick look through the pay sheets for 2017, the last year publicly available, and it looks to be only about 25 positions that are non-overtime earning, management level, non-union positions that that would affect, which seems like an awfully small amount of money that would be saved by that.
Right. Well, the reason why I made that proposal, I think maybe long-term it should be across the board. But I know with my experience representing municipalities and school districts, you can't make a union do that. You have to negotiate it. So the only way you negotiate that, though, is you have to do it first. Management needs to do it first and then can go to the table and see if they can negotiate that with some of the other unions. So the city manager did put a cost on my proposal and it was about $400,000, a little over $400,000.
Okay. Sort of a related question to that, as you look at the positions that are out there that are overtime-eligible, that are union member positions, we've got people who are police lieutenants and fire battalion chiefs who are union members, who are in supervisory command-level positions there. Do we go too high on the band for some of those positions for them to be overtime-eligible and making well over $100,000 a year and, you know, a large chunk of percentage-wise their base salary in overtime every year?
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with your statement. And I think part of it, too, is it's set by, it's set by the Illinois Municipal Code. I don't think that we have that much leeway in changing whether they can be in a bargaining unit or not. So I don't even think that that's something that's possible.
So it's not anything that can be resolved?
Right. And I don't think, I think it's also something that's out of the city's control, at least with regards to the public safety positions at the city, fire and police, because they are so statutorily driven.
All right. Another thing that you had mentioned in looking at some of these fees that were imposed, you discussed the idea of either reducing some of the burden on that by charging not-for-profits and potentially others' costs for the city coming and responding with fire department personnel for what I'm going to call the help I fall and I can't get up kinds of calls that they have, both at nursing homes as well as hospitals. Do you have an estimate for how much that would bring in?
No, we didn't get an estimate. I did bring that up during the budget discussions and that was also a proposal I made that we should do that as an alternative to the property pension fee that the majority of the council passed. You know, my thought was if that really truly is the rationale for adopting that, what we call, what they called the public pension fee, is to get some of the costs paid for by the nonprofits for their fair share of the public safety costs, then let's call it really what it is, a public safety fee and do what I asked, you know, the city manager to look at, in effect, we were on the council floor and I was looking it up on my phone, but there are other cities across the country that do that. And they just charge a fee to nonprofits for, you know, part of their, yeah, part of their costs of like fire and police and other public safety services that the cities provide. Now, the corporation council questioned it and said it wasn't sure that that would be legally permissible or constitutional and he'd have to look into it. But I think I was talking about doing that as an alternative for the fee that was being charged against everyone. And I do think it's worth exploring. I also brought up what during those discussions, asked the city manager if, you know, we could direct him and if he'd be willing to just sit down with some of the bigger nonprofit organizations, the hospitals and Bradley, and negotiate some kind of fee with them as an alternative to the property pension fee. In private conversations I've had with the president of Bradley, he said he'd be open to that, to sitting down and negotiating a fee and, you know.
Presumably because he's looked at the number of times he has ambulances out.
Yeah, put words in his mouth. But he said, yeah, we would look at that and be willing to explore that. So I think those kinds of things would have been a better way to handle that issue.
I also got to ask, what's the compelling reason to have our public safety personnel going out to a call like that, that an ambulance is going to get to where there doesn't appear to be an imminent danger to somebody, that it is clearly just a simple I fall and I can't get up call? Why are we sending an entire fire engine company out to that?
Well, and that's a good question. And that is one of the reasons why we hired a consultant. The Fitch Group is doing an analysis of all of our emergency service, all the emergency services that we provide. And we're waiting for a final report to come back. And it will, they're looking at that as well as a number of other things, including our emergency response, the 911 team, and whether things could be more efficient or whether they're efficient enough or we should and should not be doing certain things. So I'm waiting to look at and see what that report says.
Okay. And that report seems to be overdue by at least a couple of months.
Yes. I'm not sure what the holdup is because I think they were here in the late fall. And then I do know that they were, they were back meeting with people at City Hall. I want to say I think it was in December. So hopefully in this first quarter, we'll get that report back.
Speaking of being delayed, a couple of years ago, we had some people in from Washington looking at the city and its race issues and had community meetings across the city. A lot of people came up and showed up for those. We haven't had a report come out since.
That's the neighborhood.
National Resource Network.
Yeah. And I don't, and I was, and I was actually disappointed. I was out of town the week that they were here on vacation, so I didn't get a chance to meet with them. And I'm not sure, that's a good question. It's something that we should follow up on. I don't know what happened. I think we may have gotten an initial report, the whole community, but I am not, I honestly don't know what happened with all of that.
But small group meeting, you have large group meetings and then small group meetings came out of that. And if you took me into a room with a swinging light bulb overhead and told me that I needed to tell you exactly what City Hall had done after those small group meetings, I'd have to confess that I had no earthly idea what the city's next step was after those small group meetings.
And that was with the, it was, it's the neighborhood, what was it called? The national?
National Resource Network.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, that's a good question. I just made a note to do a follow-up because I'm not sure whatever, what happened to that.
Well, then the city hosted their own, too. They had hundreds of people at them and nothing happened after that either.
If you notice in my response to one of the questions that you asked about the, you know, Wall Street, what is it called?
24/7.
24/7 report. That was one of the things that I mentioned is that, you know, we hosted those community meetings, which were so well-attended, and then broke off into smaller groups. And I attended some of the meetings of the smaller group, of the Justice Reform Group and the housing one. And that was one of the things I said, we need to reinstitute those. And because there were a lot of community members that participated and had great ideas and get a report back and, because we really dropped the ball, I think the city did. And, you know, that's partly our fault. We need to stay on top of the city manager and all the things that he's doing. But I think that's, that's one of the ways to address, you know, that article and then the recent article. We need to have community meetings and we need to come up with some plans and move forward and implement them.
One of the other elements I would say that's an obstacle for the city there is getting people in neighborhoods, and I'm calling them neighborhoods, that aren't visibly affected by some of these concerns, where you can go outside and not feel as though you have a lack of investment in the community. Getting people who live in those neighborhoods to have a buy-in and recognize the effect this has on the entire city. What can City Hall be doing better? What do you think you're going to try to do if you're re-elected to get people in those areas to care and buy in to city government needing to tackle those?
Maybe, I mean, part of it is having meetings on these issues in those neighborhoods. I mean, every time we've had meetings on these issues, it's been downtown or on the south side. I mean, we need to have them in the 5th District and in the 4th District. And maybe, you know, one of the things I was thinking is have it at the high school, too. Have, you know, a lot of the kids that go to Richwoods High School are from all over the city. And it's a very, and that's actually a very diverse community. If you're familiar with Richwoods now, it's probably one of the most racially, socially, geographically diverse high schools in the entire country, or at least in the entire state, I'd say. And, I mean, I think that would be a good place to start. Have a meeting there and invite all of the parents who live all over the city to this meeting and get discussions going and have them be part of it.
What I'm hearing a lot, and we've been talking with the community for over five years, meet monthly, we have another meeting on Wednesday, Boys and Girls Club, is that talk. It's all we do is talk. And they're saying, when's, when are we going to start having, who owns, who owns the change? Who is, who should be the person who, or people who hear what the problems are and come up with a course for change? Who should be owning that?
I mean, I think part of it is the city. But like you said, but shouldn't all the other stakeholders be part of it? People that live in the communities? So I don't know, do we form, but we have so many other, all these organizations and all these different, you know, silos. We don't want to do that. So I think the city has to take some of those.
Who is the city?
Well, that's a good question. And I think I mentioned this in my answer. I think, you know, we do have an opportunity with, we have a phenomenal new diversity officer. And this is connected to his mission and his experience. And I think that he could be the head of it and spearhead it and help lead the whole city and the community in finding solutions and implementing them, like you said, not just talk about them. One thing I did think of, one thing I do want to say is, you know, the city is doing, has done little things, at least with regard to the whole issue of whether or not, of the segregation and the high unemployment and the high poverty in certain areas of the city. It's a huge problem. And one of the solutions is getting more investment, more jobs. And the city is doing little things. Now, they're not huge, but like the Green Corps or the Peoria Job Corps, you know, which is connected to our CSO pilot project. I mean, I've gone to the graduations of the Green Corps and they've, we've graduated three classes of 10 or more and they were all individuals who live in 61605, who don't have jobs, who are, you know, who've had trouble getting jobs. They were given training, they give them soft skill training and then job training and like green cleanup things, environmental things, how to, you know, clean up weeds, cut grass, cut trees and that kind of thing. And all the members of, I think, almost every single class now has a job somewhere else. Some of them still along that field. A couple of them went to ICC now and are, you know, pursuing their education. But so that's a small initiative, but I think the city needs to expand that initiative along with the Wells Farm Initiative on the south side. That also, you know, has an urban ag apprentice program. And we've done the same thing, where we've taken a group of individuals who live in impoverished areas of Peoria who didn't have jobs, and then we've trained them on how to be urban agriculturalists, how to, you know, grow food and flowers. And then they've sold them down at the Riverfront Market. You know, and also along with that training, taught them soft skills. Those types of programs, even though they're little, they could be expanded and we need to do more of them. Another program that I've been asking the city manager about, that I've done some research on, is a program called Jump Start, which has started in Baltimore, Maryland. And now they've also done one in Cincinnati. And actually, how I found out about it, it was featured on the program Our House. And what it does is it takes individuals who usually have criminal records, a lot of them are recovering addicts, and it matches them up in this program with construction trades and contractors. And they provide them intense training, first soft skills, then job training, and have employed them. And they've been very successful in Baltimore and Cincinnati. And I think that's something, and they've worked mainly with contractors to get it set up. And of course, you have to get grants and funding to do it. But I think that's something worth exploring. The city also has been working with NAACP and the building trades to get more minorities and people that live in poorer neighborhoods apprenticeships and jobs. And they have focused on going out to the community and to job fairs and getting people like that involved. Because I think that's partly where you start, is helping provide training and increase employment.
We're coming off of a year, as you well know, that had a recent record-tying number of homicides in the city of Peoria. What more ought the police department or the city be doing to combat that? One of your retiring at-large colleagues has suggested city police need to move over to a stop and frisk policy. And I want to take your temperature on how you feel about that notion. But what else should the city be doing?
I don't think that's the answer, number one. I think that the city needs to, the other thing is we don't, we don't fix the problem by cutting whatever it was, six to nine police patrol officers, the vacancies that we didn't fill. I mean, we were coming off of, like you said, one of the highest years of shootings and homicides, and we've already had three this year. So I think that's a problem. Other things that we need to do, I think, if we can, if we can find the funding, we need to have more police in the communities. I mean, our residential, resident officer programs have been successful, but we need more of them. We need the police on the streets and in the neighborhoods. I think we also need to work on building community relationships. I think we need to work with groups like Terry Burnside's outreach group and support what he's doing. You know, he and his volunteers are on the street and in the areas where they have been, there hasn't been any shootings. Something that I've been thinking about and have been talking about doing, you know, my background, I was, I started out as a legal services attorney at Cabrini-Green Legal Aid Clinic. And I was there in 1992 when Dan Trell Davis got shot. And that was when they had had all these shootings and all these homicides. And after, and this was a little boy that got shot on his way to school from a gang member who was up in the high-rise. When that happened, and I attended the community meetings, and they were filled with gang members and people that lived there and worked there, they did a ceasefire in Chicago. And it actually, if you go back and look at it, it actually worked. I think for, you know, more than a year, it's like nine months or even more, it was nine months before they had another shooting. But they also then collected guns and had a period of time where you could turn in your guns, no questions asked, to the police. I think those are all things that are worth exploring right now in the city. And I've actually been talking with Terry Burnside and some other people that are on the streets and work with gang members and the kids that are involved in these crimes. And I think that those are things that are worth exploring.
Now, didn't we do a gun buyback program a couple of years ago?
I'm not aware if we did.
I thought there was one that was spearheaded by pastors in the community.
And I'm not sure if we did. And maybe it's time to try that again now that we're having this outbreak of violence. You know, I am very concerned about it. I think we have to support the P.CAV, which is doing a better, you know, they have a new board, they're doing new things, they're working with Crime Stoppers, and they're trying to partner with other community organizations. We have to do that. But number one, we have to admit that it's a problem. You know, ShotSpotter or whatever isn't going to solve all of our crime. And we need to do something more.
As far as finding new officers and particularly resident officers, I want to ask you two things about that. One, would you support incentives for having more officers live in the city? We obviously can't require, demand it, but would you support in a new contract incentivizing living in the city?
Oh, definitely. I would definitely support that. A program that the city used to have that I'm aware of, just because it was after I worked at the city, but we had an officer in our neighborhood, you know, I live over in Moss Bradley, and they used to have a program where it wasn't an incentive, but the city provided down payment assistance to officers that would move and live in the older neighborhoods in the city. And then they were committed to staying there. And we had an officer who lived, I think it was on Barker, for more than five years. It could have been close to 10. And that was part of that same program that was probably in effect, maybe, I don't want to show my age, 15 years ago, maybe 20. But I think that those are very important things that the city should start doing again.
And two, if we're, if we need to have more officers, where do we find the money to pay for them? And to pay for the houses that they're going to live in and to pay for the incentives for them to live within the city? Where do we find the cash to do that?
I mean, that's the million-dollar question. Maybe we reduce the money that we give to the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau by half. I mean, I think that would pay for at least one officer, would pay for an officer and a down payment on a house. And that's important, too. You know, with our resident officer program, you know, now we're starting to take, we're taking old houses that are vacant, like the one, you know, on the near north side. And that's another thing that I've, you know, always been involved in and advocating for is saving the old houses. And you can combine the two and solve two problems, which is important, and I think we should do more of it. But you're right, the million-dollar question is where do we get the money?
It's a question for everything, yes.
It is.
I just have a couple of more things before. I just have a couple of more things before we, we wrap up. You have thoughts on moving to a more committee-based system for the council, going back to, to the way it had been previously? What's, what's the value to that?
Well, you know.
With 10 people and the number of questions that you have coming into a meeting now versus the other way?
Well, one of the reasons, I, you know, I keep thinking about, one of the, one of the things about being on the city council, I mean, you see, there's a, there's a, there's a, a group that sort of controls a lot of what goes on.
The seven.
And there's several of us on the council that sometimes we don't know what's happening until the, you know, till we get the agenda, the Thursday or Friday before the meeting. I mean, not everybody's in the loop. And my big thing is let's stop doing backroom deals, you know? Let's have everything be open and transparent. And when we used to have that kind of a system, you know, council members were assigned to different areas and committees, like whether it was housing or finance, or, um, I know there were other areas. But then that council person is who all those ideas come to, who hosts those meetings. Like for example, um, with, with, you know, that, that article that came out, one of the big things that came out of that article that people are talking about and that I've been pushing for is we need an affordable housing policy. You know, that's why I insisted and kept asking for, and we finally had a policy session. It was last March, but now that's almost a year ago. And we still haven't worked out a plan or a policy or a program. And we need a comprehensive plan on affordable housing. So why don't we have that be a task force or something that one or two of us are on? And then you have the stakeholders that are involved with affordable housing that live in the neighborhoods and start developing a plan. I'm advocating doing that so that, um, the city's business is everybody's business on the city council and also the public. I think it's a better way of running the government. Instead of having one, two, or three, you know, controlling the agenda and everything that happens, you've got more representation and a more representative government. And, and to me, that, that, it's, it's better government and that, that's what I'm all about, is trying to make the city run better, make the city a better city and make city government better.
How, why can't you convince your colleagues?
Well, you know, I actually have just been thinking about this. I haven't brought it forward. I just, um, actually, I put it to pen and paper and that response, I've just sort of been thinking about that the last month or two. And I think it, it could be really beneficial. So it's something I'm, I'm advocating for and will push for if I'm reelected.
Okay. I, I want to ask you two, in, in your questionnaire, you, you seem to be in favor of potentially considering reducing council salaries along with the, the reduce everybody below a hundred thousand or above a hundred thousand as part of a, a symbolic gesture on the part of the council, because you guys do not make very much money for, for what you do. You reject the idea though of, of removing the healthcare benefit for council members, which those savings might be, be equally symbolic since there were only three or four of you on the council who were taking advantage of that out of, out of 11. What's the difference between the two and, and why are you taking, or did you take in 2017, the, the city healthcare?
Okay. Double, double question. First, um, the, the reason why, um, the difference between the two is if I'm proposing and advocating, which I have, a reduction of salary, um, even though it's for anybody making over a hundred thousand dollars, and we certainly, I think only make, I think 16,000.
Something like that.
Yeah, a year. I'm not opposed to, if, if the city council were to adopt, um, that proposal to then the council agreeing to reduce their salary by 10,000. Like you said, I mean, that's consistent then with what we're asking people in the upper levels of, um, management to do. With regards to the, the benefits, I mean, I, I said that on the floor. First, it was only going to be a $27,000 savings, according to the city manager, if, if we did it for all 11 of us. The, the proposal at the time was only to do it for the five at-large people. So it wasn't a huge cost savings. It wasn't going to have any real impact on our $7 million deficit. So I kind of felt like, I think Councilman Grab called it an election gimmick. And I tend to agree with him. I, that, that's what it kind of felt like it was. But I also think it's important for us to have people on the council that are from all walks of life. And it should not be, um, you shouldn't have to be independently wealthy, um, you know, and able to have your own health insurance and salary to serve on the, the city council. Many of us on the council work in addition, you know, have other jobs in addition to being on the city council, but, but some of us are self-employed. Some have had to move to part-time because, partly because of the commitment that the city council is. So I, I didn't want to remove, make that a, a barrier to people who otherwise couldn't afford to be on the city council.
Okay. And you've alluded to some of this in, in some of your, your previous answers, but of course the council has one employee that reports directly to the council and, and that's the city manager. What's your assessment of, of the work that Patrick Yurk is doing?
Patrick, he's, he has done, he's a very good job in, in some areas. He's, you know, he's very knowledgeable on finances, municipal government, um, even, you know, economic development, a lot of areas he has a lot of expertise in. I think he sometimes, he needs to do a better job communicating with all of the council. For example, um, sometimes I feel like we don't get all the information that we should. An example of that would be the recent, um, I, how we recently found out that the recycling was going to change from alley side to curb side for people living in the older neighborhoods that already had recycling and garbage pickup on their alleys. When that came to my attention, I think it was in December, um, a citizen found out about it and, and contacted me. I was totally surprised, didn't know about it. So went to the city manager and the director of public works at the time, Scott Reese. And they said, well, we're, Scott said, we're working and talking with PDC. We're not sure what's going to happen yet. So, you know, I thought it was under the impression that it, they were still being negotiated. And then, um, I went back and looked and I brought this up at the last council meeting, all of our communications on, um, the RFP and the eventual contract that we approved. Patrick highlighted the differences in services that this contract provides compared to what we were currently providing. And I went through the, and I brought this up and I even had it with me, the PowerPoint that he did summarizing the changes, the agenda item. And then we had a term offer with everything highlighted, what the changes in services were, what the offer was to PDC. And there was nothing mentioned in there that there would be a change from.
Even though the contract did explicitly make that change, right?
But seeing, this was the problem too. What we didn't do as a council, now looking back at it, I think was a mistake. We didn't have the actual contract to approve. If you go back and look at it, all we had was.
It wasn't attached to the.
No, no, no. All we had was the term offer, was the, the terms of the offer and those highlighted. And then the actual action that the city took was to, was to approve those terms and direct or give the city manager the authority to finalize a contract with PDC based on those terms. So, you know, I mean, in a way, I feel like, not intentionally, but we were not given the full story. Or maybe the full story changed when he, you know, finalized the agreement, but we never got a report back or we're never advised that this is going to, this is going to change. And when it affects 24, it's 2,400 property owners, that's a big deal. Especially when, you know, one of my primary goals I brought up years ago was when we start negotiating and looking for a new garbage contract. I mean, I'm bringing this up now, I think I brought it up four years in advance, five years. I want us to look at more recycling. That was a big priority for me. I want to reduce the cost, they shouldn't have to pay for it and have it more often. And that was a big priority of all the council, based on the surveys that we got from the public. And so that was a big part of this contract. And so they, he touted that, oh, we've increased recycling subscribers by 3,000, like two weeks before we found out about this change. And now I'm hearing from the majority of the people of, that, of those 2,400 who are current recyclers, they're not going to recycle anymore. So what's the point of getting 3,000 more when you're going to lose 1,000 or more? So, um, and I'm, so that's just an example. Things like that frustrate me. And the city manager needs to do a better job at communicating when major changes like that happen in something as important as the garbage contract.
On, on a fair number of, of issues where the council is split, I think you would agree with me, it tends to be a seven-four council, maybe sometimes a six-five council. On, on many of those issues, you have not been on the prevailing end.
Right.
Of, of those things. How do you, in a new term, become more effective at convincing people to vote with you on, on some of these things that we've talked about today?
Well, I, hopefully, I'm hopeful that we may have, um, a little bit of a different makeup of the city council. You know, we have a lot of people running this time around and, you know, attending these forums, there's a real mood, maybe just like nationally for change. And I think if we change the makeup by the council by one or two during, or even more during this election, um, and then even in two years, I think that I, I hope, and I think, I don't think I'll be in the minority most of the time and I'll be more effective. Even though I'm, I am in the minority, I think I, I, I am effective in the way that I bring things forward that otherwise might not be talked about on the floor. Asking questions, I, I guess I'm sort of filling the shoes of my predecessor whose seat I was appointed, who you know is Gary Sandberg. And I always used to joke, you know, I might do, go about it a little bit differently. And maybe be, um, I don't know, a little more polite, but I, I have noticed over the years, I've become a little bit stronger and a little bit more vocal. And I do feel like, um, wait a minute, I have a question. And I'm kind of feeling like, um, Gary Sandberg at some points, and that's not a bad thing. That's an important voice to have on the city council.
And I guess philosophically, since you can open the door to it, if, if you're talking about the, the value of, of some, some change this cycle and electing some different people, you also favor keeping a five districts, five at-large and presumably the, the bullet voting that goes along with that. That, that's almost.
Well, yeah, we, the, the question didn't relate to the bullet voting, but it was just about whether the.
The makeup.
The at-large should move to districts. And, and I think I pointed it out in my answer, I actually think that having five at-large district people, I mean, five at-large people in addition to the district council members has been a benefit to the citizens. Over the years, you know, I get involved in a lot of issues when, um, you know, for various reasons, a, a district council person maybe hasn't been responsive to a, a resident of their district. And then, and help too, just to make projects better or to solve the problem. And I think that's important. And we have a unique perspective when you represent the entire city than when you just represent your small district, that I think is important. And that brings another voice to the council that I think has been important, at least since I've been on the council.
Okay. Final question to wrap up. Voters have a choice to make on the 26th and just a couple of weeks, and then they've got another choice to make on April 2nd, if, if you make it through into the, the runoff. Why you instead of the other 13 candidates?
Good question. No, I, I am a very, I've been a very strong independent voice that I think is important. Like I've said here a few times, I'm not afraid to stand up to entrenched interest, ask important questions, make sure that the city business is done in an open and transparent manner. I have also been a voice, you know, I like to say a voice for all, whether it's, you know, the, a single mom on the south side or a small business owner who offers sterling in the fourth district, or, um, a couple that lives in the fifth district that's concerned about the roundabout near their, um, being built near their house. I have made sure that everybody's voices are heard. I've brought them forward. I've also demanded on a number of big issues that we have public meetings with public input, whether it's the Riverfront Trail Apartments, um, the budget meetings that I pushed for that we had throughout the district, um, having the budget challenge and the budget surveys.
I missed that this last year.
Those were added too. And part of that, I think was, it wasn't done because we had the mid-year budget crisis. And I'm going to push that we do those again. There has been some criticism that we don't get a lot of attendance, so we have to do a better way of getting the word out and getting people there. And, you know, I've, I've pushed doing those actually, you know, one of the controversial thing was the Main and University project, but I always go back, that was when I first got on the council and Councilman Grab and Akison and I made sure and worked with the new director at the time, Michael Rogers, and assistant director at the time, Scott Reese, to have these public meetings to help with the, give input on the design of the project. We had over a hundred people, three different times at Bradley. And so when people complain about that, I said, but we had a lot of public input and that design was done based on that input. And now we've continued to do that on road projects. On Forest Hill, we did the same thing on the Harvard Street project. We've done it for Pioneer Parkway. So, and we even did it for the roundabouts on Allen Road. So having public input is important. And we did it to the new construction on Willow Knowles and Allen. If you remember, we had a big public meeting there too. And, and, and I like to think that's partly from me pushing and advocating for us to do that. And I think that makes better decisions and better, um, better policies and better projects. I know I'm kind of going way too long here, but there's a number of reasons if, if, if the citizens have liked my voice on the council, they need to keep me on the council, they need to vote for me.
All right. Thank you very much. At-large city councilwoman Beth Jensen, good luck in the election.
Thank you.